Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the council at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the council at this time? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the council at this time? Your turn, sir. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, council. Lyons, 5th Ward. I'm gonna be very brief. Ms. Burns should be in her seat. Ms. Mushak, you owe Ms. Winfrey Carter an apology. Oh, she's gone. But Eva, the best thing you've done since you've been in council is decide to resign. Congrats. I wish you well. And I might believe in Liddell. With you it'd be wasted energy, so I'm just leaving it at that. Have a good one, and I wish you butterflies, daffodils, and all that other stuff.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address council at this time?
Do y'all know y'all receive gifts? I work in the health industry. I can't receive no gift for nothing. If a person could offer me even a bag of chips, I gotta turn it down, 'cause that's considered to be a gift. You don't take gifts from your clients. That's lawless. That's illegal. And that's what you all have done up here. You all have also done something illegal by removing Tanya Burns by not even having a hearing before you removed her. So every one of y'all that voted for it, look for it, 'cause it's gonna be coming to your door. And then you wanna still silence her? She can't speak in public. She's a resident of the city of Flint. Tanya, you should be up here at this podium speaking with everybody else. No, you should be up in that seat speaking with everybody else, because that's where you're supposed to be. They shouldn't have been removing you. They know that they did something that was illegal. All of the smirks and all that stuff. Like you say, people come up here to the podium to speak, and y'all having sidebar conversations while they're speaking. That's disrespectful. That is very disrespectful. Looking down so you don't have to look up at 'em. Constantly looking down. Look at Candace. She can't even look up. She don't wanna look up. 'Cause she knows she should be ashamed of what she doing. Even her own family and her employer tell her that.
Now, based upon the now president of this council, Councilwoman Liddell Lewis, it is, in my opinion, that she does not have enough emotional maturity, nor does she have enough intellectual capital, nor does she have enough mental fortitude to handle this level of authority that you all are proposing to give to her. Her record served on this council thus far shows that. So I take issue with that. In my opinion, it's as if you're trying to, instead of having a democracy, form a dictocracy. A word that I like to make up. Dictocracy. You're trying to dictate as opposed to it being a democracy. But I tell you what. He who laughs first, laughs last. Wait on it.
Point of order. Who was that from? The chair recognizes the councilwoman in the 9th Ward.
According to council rules, a council member may not speak in public speaking.
We will have order in the chambers, or we will clear out the chambers. Please allow me to rule on... This is your first warning, Ms. Mohammed. I sure will. That's your second warning. That's your second warning.
Madam Chair, I appeal the ruling of the chair not allowing Councilwoman Burns to speak.
The chair didn't even rule. Everybody started screaming.
I'm sorry. I could not even hear, so... Okay, I withdraw my appeal.
I literally asked her what was her point, and that's all that happened. Is there an officer in the room? Ms. Mohammed has received her second warning, and she's still sitting here.
I appeal the ruling of the chair. Madam Chair, I appeal the ruling of the chair.
She has received her second warning. That's fine.
I appeal the ruling of the chair.
That's fine. Our disordered subsection says what it says, so go ahead.
When did she receive her first warning?
When y'all started all that yelling. If they wouldn't have been yelling, they'd have heard it. It's not a back and forth between you and I either. Officer, remove her.
Point of order.
What's your point, Mr. Murphy?
Our councilman, Winfrey Carter...
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman, appeal your decision. You have to ask, is there a second?
She received her first warning. There was no appeal, so she received her second warning.
I'm only speaking to...
Yes, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
You did not state that she had a first warning.
I did. Everybody was yelling, and she said, "That's fine." She literally heard me, 'cause she yelled back at me about the first warning.
Madam Chair, we must do things fairly and correct.
That's absolutely right. Please remove her, and I'm not asking again.
Madam Chair, I appeal the ruling of the chair. I appeal the ruling of the chair.
According to the disordered persons subsection, which you need to read, says any person who prevents the peaceful orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning.
No, you need to ask if there's a second.
Point of order.
What is your point, Councilman Murphy?
Yo, my point to you is, my colleague asks, she appealed, you just need to ask whether there's a second.
That's fine. And according to this disordered persons subsection that was read at the beginning of this meeting, since y'all wanna follow rules so tough, it says they will be given one warning. She got her first warning.
Point of order. My point to you is...
I tell you what. This meeting is in recess until this issue can be resolved.
Hold on. My point...
I'm not...
I object to do a recess.
That's fine. I'm sorry, Mr. Pfeiffer. I heard you. Go ahead.
Yeah, just point of order. I hear what you're saying, but every decision of the chair is subject to...
Do you hear what I'm saying about the fact that she did get her first warning? She yelled back at me about her first warning.
No, I hear you. I hear you. But every decision, you made a decision to give her a second warning, that is appealable by the rules.
Are you gonna second her appeal? All right. So appeal has been made and properly seconded.
Hold on. Point of order. So you were supposed to clear out my point of order first.
Your point of order was cleared out.
But my colleague just said the same thing that I said.
If he says point of order, I have to acknowledge his point of order. I can't not acknowledge his point of order.
But what I'm saying to you, in all due respect, is when I said point of order...
He said point of order while you were still talking, so I had to acknowledge his point of order. Didn't you not hear me say, "Oh, sorry, Mr. Pfeiffer. I hear you"?
Hold on. So I don't know if you can do a point of order without clearing the first point of order.
Y'all do it all the time, so now we can't?
So all I'm saying is, when I did the point of order, I just wanted you to clear out my...
He said point of order literally while you were talking, so I had to acknowledge his point of order.
But I don't think his point of order should supersede my point of order, because I did a point of order, and...
Do you hear what I'm saying about the fact that y'all do this all the time? He said it after you, which means I had to stop. Keep in mind, what does our rule say about a point of order? That the point of order takes the floor.
What I'm trying to get you to understand...
I hear what you're saying, but the point of order takes the floor. He took the floor when he said point of order.
I don't think you can do a point, his point of order over mine's without clearing mine's up first. And mine's was that Councilwoman Jerry Winfrey Carter appealed your decision, and when she appealed your decision, all other discussions should have been ceased, and you should have asked for a second.
Here's the thing. He called a point of order immediately after Quincy. So his point of order took the floor. I acknowledged his point of order.
Point of order.
What is your point?
Please allow our colleague in the 3rd Ward to finish his sentence before speaking.
I heard his sentence, and I was trying to explain that he talked, that Dennis called a point of order right in the middle of that.
What I'm trying to help you with...
I understand. I already... I did handle your point of order. You didn't hear me say that is correct, so there's appeal. Are you seconding it?
Okay. Well, I didn't hear that part, 'cause I heard him say point of order and say the same thing that I was saying.
And I said he is correct, so are you seconding it? Literally what I said.
We good. We good. All right.
Discussion. Anybody like the floor? Councilman in the 8th Ward, you have the...
Can you talk into your mic so they can hear that you're talking?
Point of order, real quick, before discussion.
What's your point of order?
I think you have to clear up her point of order about allowing him...
She dropped it.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a lot going on.
I know. I'm cheering, and I'm paying attention. So, whole corridor over there still yelling out. Still yelling out, even with your warning. You're still yelling out. Even with your warning, you're still yelling out. Even with your warning, you're still yelling out. Even with your warning. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer. It was objected to. No, it was objected to. And if you paid attention, you would have known it was objected to. Clearly not. She is screaming out. I've asked you to remove her, and you're not removing her. She is still being disorderly yelling out.
You gonna arrest me? Are you going to arrest me? Tell me, are you going to arrest me? I've got money to get out. And I've got a whole bunch, and I'm gonna sue you along with them. 'Cause I haven't done anything. That's Candace that picked that. How am I talking now when she said recess? She never hit the gavel and said, "When was I recessed?" So you wanna arrest me because I'm in recess? You wanna arrest me? Come on, Mom. Come on, Auntie. Go with me. Y'all gonna drag me out? Come on. Keep on, keep, keep, keep the city, keep the country alive on what they doing. Now you wanna be nice, but first you wasn't being nice when you were touching me. When you was over there touching, you ain't fucking put your hands on me.
Point of order.
What is your point, Mr. Murphy?
Can we continue with this meeting, so we can go on then?
No, because she's yelling, and it's disruptive.
First of all, I'm gonna just say this. Chairperson, Michelle, you have a very nasty attitude. A nasty attitude. Give our residents latitude when they step up to this podium, and they're trying to finish their thoughts very now.
Councilman Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. So this is for the appeal or for Councilwoman Jerry Winfrey Carter. Let me make sure I do that clear, and, you know, don't mess it up, so I won't get fussed at. So here's the deal.
The chair recognizes the councilwoman in the 2nd Ward.
Thank you. This type of behavior would never be acceptable in any court of law. And we should, again, we should respect these chambers, because what takes place in these chambers is what upheld in the court of law. I don't mind looking at your back. I prefer that, so I don't have to look at your face. I'm okay with that. So, because, again, that's rude. Very, very rude. But as we continue, what we just witnessed was total, total disorder. So please enjoy the view of the back of the room as we maintain order in these chambers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there anyone else who would like the floor at this time? Anyone else? Seeing as how there is no one else that would like the floor, I will go ahead and take my time to speak. I'm not moved by anything Ms. Jerry Winfrey Carter says, because she is committed to being an obstructionist, so I do not... Everybody sitting up here putting this battery in your back got you thinking you're right. You enjoy being wrong. But what will be right is people following the rules in the chamber.
First of all, I'm not even up there. Y'all got a whole mess. A whole mess. It is. Councilman Mays has went on, he's been laid to rest, and you still have a whole mess, which tells you it's the people sitting in those seats. I'm gonna be very clear, because I take my First Amendment rights seriously. Eva Worthing in the 9th Ward, you tried to violate my First Amendment right. You need to understand, according to the U.S. Constitution, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or bridging the freedom of speech or of the press or of the people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. So I want to, the community needs to understand, who was trying to stop the process. And our attorney, Ken, made a good decision, 'cause my attorney said, "This is the gift that just keeps on giving with the nonsense." Y'all don't follow laws. Y'all lawless. Candace Mushak, you are the interim person temporarily placed in that seat. You are unhinged. You are out of control. You are angry, and you have chosen to weaponize the police against the residents. You are argumentative and disrespectful to your colleagues. You warrant no respect from anyone, because you don't give it. You did nothing to earn that seat, but have five people vote for you, and I'm quite sure Councilman Pfeiffer would take that vote back today. Y'all already voted on your own $50,000, Liddell Lewis. I'll be back for my other three minutes, 'cause you couldn't stop me. You're going to prison.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
You just like to hear yourself talk. Man, I ain't even wanna get up here tonight, but I just had to come up. This is a, like, mental illness going over there in the 7th Ward. Think you having a breakdown. Liddell left. Ooh, Priestley started talking strong. And you just need to get off the council, 'cause you don't see nothing. "Oh, what, what, what's going on? I didn't hear..." You know, get out. And I just can't wait till y'all is out here. I'm gonna do a couple cartwheels in the basement, and I have a pond with some piranhas in it. Come take a dip. One, he ain't here, but you know, I told him, when he was here, he bought and paid for. Come take a dip. Two, three, four, and seven, and you already gone, Worthing. You not even worth talking to. Good night. Oh, oh. And Quincy, we try to treat you right, but every time you get the mic, "Well, they don't know what they speaking the motives." You don't know what they gonna say. You speaking to their motives. Right at home. Come on, we gonna get that $500,000. And that other lady, whatever she is, that keep running up here bringing the folks that ask for the money. You know?
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Y'all know where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes... Your time is up.
You wait till I finish my sentence.
No, I'm not waiting for you.
Yes, you are.
This is your first warning, and you're being disorderly. This is your first warning. Your time is up. This is the thing. The next person is ready. Thank you.
I don't care about the TikToks. I only bring it up because they're trying to make money off the city, and I find it highly disgusting that someone from Grand Blanc's gonna come here and try to make money off my city, and they don't even live here. Yeah, it's disgusting.
No back and forth, no back and forth with the audience.
Poor thing can't even make any money doing it. So, I'm sorry, but go... Oh, 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 sweetie.
You're getting a divorce, 'cause you can't even have a husband.
Can we please, the audience should not be yelling out right now.
Worry about your home. Worry about your own kids.
The audience should not be yelling out right now. You are yelling out, and she's responding to you all yelling out. Stop yelling out. Everybody, come on now. Nobody talk about anybody's children. Relax. Don't talk about kids.
Councilman Murphy.
A point of order.
What happened?
He's continuing to yell out and cuss.
I don't know who he is.
Mr. Kermit Lyons in the white Adidas suit.
Government Ops didn't happen, because one of my colleagues who said it needs to go through Government Ops got up and left before Government Ops could happen. So it's not like somebody's trying to circumvent a process. He can't circumvent... Go ahead, Ms. Winfrey Carter. What's your request?
Madam Chair, do you realize this was not on the Governmental Operations Committee agenda?
So, as I was stating, whether it was or not, you didn't stay for it. And also, we've had five months for you to read some rules, and you haven't done that, so I'm not gonna believe you sat and read the Government Ops agenda before you needed to make this argument. And so, I just want us to be for real.
I can't read.
Come on now. Not back and forth. You're on my time. Stop interrupting me.
Madam Chair, reading...
You're on my time. What's your request, Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Do you realize I can't read?
I didn't say you couldn't read.
I did read it.
Okay. Didn't read or comprehend what I just said. Go ahead. What's your point of order?
That's an improper request for information.
I mean, it's fine. She's fine. That's how she felt. That's how she felt. It's fine. So, you know, I mean, she is the expert on when someone's being nasty, so I know she's being nasty. She knows she's being nasty right now. As I was saying, we are...
You're not being nasty.
Absolutely not. I'm talking on my time. If you're interrupting, this is not a back and forth, Ms. Winfrey Carter. Please. Focus and contain yourself like the adult that everyone else has to be when you're talking, and it's not... And you're not saying something they care to hear. Contain yourself. Everyone else sits and contains themselves and allows you to speak. I don't interrupt you. Please do not interrupt me. You had your time. This is my time. Let me take my time. Thank you. And so, this has to go one way or the other. It's not that astonishing, Mr. Dumas. Please. We will not put this to a vote. Madam clerk.
I just wanna say, Mr. President, I think you ruled incorrectly on that, although I didn't...
Is that what you wanted to stop me?
Yes.
Okay, go. Proceed.
Because what you've done in essence is give Mr. Mays unfair advantage in discussion, and I believe that's what Councilwoman Worthing was trying to point out. We are going to have discussion when the item comes up, but allowing him to speak first, setting up the thing, is giving him an unfair advantage in discussion. That's all I wanna say.
Councilwoman Worthing speaks as intelligently as you do. I understood what she said.
And, Mr. President.
Counselman, I got it.
Mr. President.
Counselman.
If I may, this is a special order I requested, and ain't nobody can have no unfair advantage. I'm not fighting for no advantage. I'm fighting for the communicating facts. If Ms. Worthing and Ms. Fields wanted to speak, they got that opportunity. But don't cloud what I'm doing in a special hearing I requested with all that negative stuff, unfair advantage, criticizing you. It just frankly pisses me off.
Thank you, Councilman Mays.
Yeah, thank you.
Six of the contract. The score...
Point of order. Five minutes is up. It was voted upon and done by the majority of this council. I tried to help y'all, Nayyara. It's time to hear from AECOM. We got to be fair. I embody y'all's vote. Five times up.
Is recommendations.
Point of order.
I'm just letting you know that.
Have you ruled, 'cause she's still talking?
No, she's done. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Nayyara.
That's your counsel, Nayyara.
Now, would we, do we have representatives from AECOM that would like to approach the...
Just ignorant. Remember who do what.
Mike Wangar with AECOM.
I see. Worthing? Ms. Lewis, I would be ashamed to team up with Worthing. Ms. Priestley, I know you feel good to sit on the executive committee of the Tennessee County Republican Party in this demonstratory stronghold, surrounded by black folks and y'all being empowered, just like y'all talking now. You ain't been more stunned when I'm talking about you glad to be communicating with Quincy Murphy. That's why you're slipping a cookie under the table. I'm just looking at y'all. We dead serious. You canceled a budget meeting, scared of some black folks, and don't want Ms. Burns to say black-white. Don't want me to say Democrat or Republican. It's real. It's real. Black folks ain't dumb.
Thank you, Mr. Mays.
See, that first row, where we sit, you cannot see anyone who's sitting in the front row.
What's your request?
Point of order.
What's your point?
Ms. Priestley, you to check. When you hear her say, "Request information..."
Excuse me. I was taking a drink.
I know. I've been talking to Quincy.
What's your point of information?
Let me finish my point of order, and you rule on it. When she said, "Request information," you supposed to tell Ms. Herkenrother, as she keep talking fast, to stop. You was just taking a drink. Let's see what happened when I do a request.
Go ahead. What is your point, Ms. Burns?
My request for information.
Sorry. Your request for information.
My request for information is, did you know that the two women had just arrived, and it is on video?
Yes, I did, because Ms. Mohammed parked right next to me. Yes, I did. I did not say that they hadn't arrived, and I believe if we go back and check the record, that will indicate that.
Request for information.
What's your request?
So, Ms. Herkenrother, you was...
I was not consulted for that. I'm live...
Give her a warning, please.
I'll take any warning you want.
Okay, well, give it to her.
I'm tired of this.
You gave her a warning?
Yes.
I hope you get your second one and be gone. It's a request for information. Give her a second when she's still talking.
Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
She's still talking. Give her a second. That's what y'all do, me.
You cannot have the floor. Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Rais. We had a point of order.
Don't discriminate. Y'all give me second warnings in the middle of it. She just deserved a second one. You didn't give it. But now I'm gonna proceed. My request for information is to Ms. Herkenrother. Was you scared of the black folks too?
Point, excuse me. Point of order. According to Rule 26.4, using a request for information as an opportunity to gain the floor is not allowed. Multiple abusive requests for information is cause for disciplinary action. Madam Chair, he deserves a warning.
Point of order.
What's your point?
Oh, no, she did not. Just read that. When you sat here and asked to request for information of Ms. Burns, after the first request, and she didn't answer you, you shouldn't have come back to ask the second one.
That is an improper point.
You know what? I'm tired of all of you guys. I'm tired. You need to sit back and be quiet and let her hear this meeting. What you laughing about?
This is your first warning.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Herkenrother.
Councilman Eric Mays think he can just rule the council. And then what's really sad is that he has people that will follow him. I mean, this is just completely sad. Now, he's the senior councilman, but listen to this. Okay. Now, he's bragging about that, and it's all about race. He's not fronting nobody but the blacks. I'm black, but I don't even appreciate that. You have more people in your ward than blacks, and anybody that listen to you sitting on that council, they must have a problem.
Are you here to speak on this public hearing?
Well, if you hear me, I'm saying I am. Kate Phil. Yes, I am.
Okay, proceed.
Well, Kate Phil, on this hearing, to move the city forward, we are really gonna need to vote you and some other members on this council. I'm...
Sir, take your name, sir.
My name is Robert Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and I'm going to remind you... Thank you, Mr. Jones, and I'm going to remind you one more time.
I'm gonna remind you.
You can only, Mr. Jones, please stop speaking. You're out of order. You can only speak regarding the topic of this public hearing, which is ordinance 210044. That's all.
Thank you. To move this city forward for ordinance, ordinance 210044, we are going to need to remove Kate Fields, Eva Worthy, Maurice Davis.
Now, please rem, please mute the speaker.
I'm talking...
Point of order, Ms. Fields. Point of order.
What is your point of order, Ms. Mays? What is your point of order?
Ms. Fields, you might not like what the gentleman is saying. He have the right to believe what it takes to move that particular ordinance forward. He can say that. People can beat up on me. They can beat up on you. It's being germane to move in that ordinance in the city. But give this man the latitude to make his point. You are wrong, and I'm saying leave him alone.
I will give you one more opportunity to speak on the ordinance, but you must confine your remarks to the public hearing topic.
Thank you. So for the ordinance that I wanted to speak about is 210044. To move this ordinance, I believe we need to remove Kate Fields, Eva Worthy.
All right. Now, mute the gentleman and move on, please.
Point of order.
What's your point?
What is your point of order, Mr. Mays?
Ms. Fields, that man ain't hardly said one whole sentence yet, and he's talking about that ordinance, and he's in order. And so if you rule again that that what he said was out of order, I'm gonna see if I get a second this time. So you wrong for saying he's out of order. Don't mute him and don't remove him because I'm appealing that he's in order. Four blacks and a splitter and a Hispanic.
You're not being germane. The motion on the floor.
I'm being germane, Tito Marlin, Jackie.
Mr. Mays, please remain...
Okay, let me wrap up there. Let me wrap up, but don't get mad because I'm saying I'm being germane, Jackie, Tito, Marlin, Randy, Evan, Latoya, and Janet. I'm germane. Been lost control. We had five solid votes, and to that Willie Lynch syndrome snuck in.
Point of information.
Yeah.
Of order.
We all out of order. It's beyond a point of order. Y'all gone?
Should not be given the floor. He has been removed from this meeting.
You can't listen to a point of order when I'm already in a point of order. They out of order. Galloway in this field, you got to rule him out of order. When I've got a point of order, she can't interrupt a point of order with another point of order. Rule these women out of order.